Good evening, everyone, and welcome to November 16th York City Council meeting. We will begin with public comment. I didn't have anyone sign up, but is there somebody who wishes to speak on any item other than what's on the agenda? Hearing none. We'll proceed with the legislative meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes, here.
Nixon.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Nixon.
Here. And Ms. Buckingham, would you come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Please stand if you are able.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence. We need to have action on the minutes of October the 19th. Were there any additions or corrections to the minutes as distributed?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting those minutes, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Very well, that passes. Mr. Mayor, will you please proceed with an update on the ARPA funds?
Absolutely.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry.
Yes, I just wanted to make it clear that I specifically requested for Mrs. Baldwin to do the presentation. I did that because there's growing concerns of transparency, autonomy, and ethic concerns. And so I thought having her give the presentation would help ease those concerns. To have that ignored, I do have issues with that. Nonetheless, you're here, so I appreciate you giving the presentation, but I would have preferred for my original request to be honored.
Okay. Ms. Baldwin is a staff member, and ARPA comes under my purview, so I thought that you would want a presentation from me.
I requested Mrs. Baldwin.
So it is my great privilege to bring to you the results of the work of the ARPA Advisory The ARPA Advisory Group was made up of 12 individuals from throughout York City, and their names are included. I want to thank Harry Cologne, Alice Ann Frost, Carol Hill Evans, Joan Maruskin, Tanya Thompson-Morgan, Lou Rivera, Joyce Santiago, Jules Tolbert, Madeline Torres Ocasio, Ed Quina Washington, and Vicky Washington for their participation, and also Ms. Walker, or Vice President Walker, for your volunteering as an alternate. So on your first page, you will see the survey results that we had from the summer survey on ARPA. I believe it was 590 folks responded to the survey. That was a survey with 95% confidence and a margin of error on any given question of You will see then what I have added for the purpose of this meeting is the amount out of the findings of the advisory group that fall under each category. So you will see that upon advice of the advisory group, I will be submitting these to City Council. $1 million for evidence-based community violence intervention programs. $300,000 to fund behavioral health counselors to assist police officers with responding to calls. $385,000 for services to address homelessness. $475,000 to provide Earn While You Learn paid work and education programs. $360,000 for partnerships with appropriate organizations to assist with family issues, including economic support, health needs, or child development. $295,000 to fund mentoring and after-school programs. $425,000 to build a York City mental health assistance and service program. $550,000 to build stronger communities through investments in housing and neighborhoods. $100,000 for housing services to support healthy living environments and neighborhoods. $225,000 in assistance to small businesses. $125,000 in assistance to those returning from incarceration. $45,000 for assistance to households through food, rent, utility, case management, home repairs, et cetera. $260,000 to address disparities in public health outcomes. $285,000 to fund improvements for the City of York parks. And additional funding that did not fall into any of the original 30 parameters, public safety, $365,000. Economic impacts, $180,000. Next, you have a list. So what we did was, what the committee did, was we looked at the quartiles, or the top 25%, second 25%, third 25%, and fourth 25% of the 132 applications that were received. We then agreed that we would look first at the top 25 percentile and determine whether or not they were eligible for funding. We found at that time that one program was potentially not directly eligible for funding, but it received a very high ranking. And the advice then was that the administration create a grant pool that would then be able to grant money directly for that purpose, and this is for facade improvements in the Northeast neighborhood. That application received very high ranking, and so the administration is going to go back and look at establishing a fund to expand on what we already have improvements for our older residents here in York. We then went through and determined, actually, I started off with suggestions, and then the committee discussed, basically, how do we take $69,000 worth of requests and narrow it down to five, $69 million worth of requests, and narrow it down to $5 million in expenditures? A very difficult task. Anytime you do this kind of work, you know some people are going to be disappointed, but I don't want folks to fret because this is only the first round of granting that the city will make, and people are eligible to file again, file applications again, most likely in the April, April-May period, when the federal government is supposed to provide us with our other $17.65 million of the appropriated money. So out of the top 25 percentile, that resulted in 19.7 million, well, just a couple more than the top 25 percentile, resulted in $19.7 million in requests. Again, we're only looking to put out about $5 million this round, so that means it was unlikely that too many folks were going to get everything that they wanted. The good news is, we've already been in discussions with the philanthropic community here in York, and they are very interested in how we did our survey and how we then had the advocacy group look at the results and grade these individual projects. So matching, there's a strong likelihood that if we found that your program was strong, that we could probably get support from the local community. The only program, the only outside program, oh, I didn't mention this. So there were about 40, 45, no, about 48 internal applications. That means the municipal government, our departments, were also going through this process, and there was, they were competing for this money as well. And that leaves 48, 16, about 84 grants from the community. So it's pretty much two-thirds from the community and about a third from internal departments. The highest ranking of the projects was the Quantum Opportunities Program, or QUAP, at the YWCA.
I'm going to request that no organizations be named, because this funding isn't approved yet.
Okay, Henry told me the opposite on the phone. He told me that he wanted all of this.
Well, I don't, essentially, I'm speaking for myself, but this has to come before council at some point.
Yes, well-
And if we don't agree on the process, or if the process was ethical, I don't want these organizations thinking that they're going to be receiving money.
Okay, so the President of Council and I had a discussion. The President said that the council wanted these tonight. If they're not presented tonight, they will be presented Monday or Tuesday during the budget hearings, so it's either today or it's next week.
Either way, either way, they're subject to, either way, they're subject to council approval.
Correct. So the way the budget works, for the community out there, the way the budget works and any allocations, council has to approve any allocations. So what has occurred so far is that the advisory group has given me their comments and their advice and their ranking of the applications. I then, as the mayor, have then taken their advice, and I will, verbatim, I have taken all of the top 37 that the group has proposed. I have added a couple more on the end, which is the prerogative as the mayor. Those ones that I have added were also included in the top second quartile.
I'm not understanding how that's your prerogative to do that.
Because the administration determines how ARPA money is spent with the approval of council.
So we work together, then?
These, may I please finish?
I just don't want information to be shared and folks thinking that they're going to receive funding if there hasn't been any collaboration with council in regards to this funding.
I agree. I did not want to give this presentation tonight, but it was requested, and this was what was requested of me by your President.
That's because we didn't know anything. Next week are our budget hearings, and you said that you would be, in our meeting last month, you said that you would be including some of this in the budget hearings.
Absolutely.
We didn't know anything about ARPA. So that's why we requested a presentation, an update, but I don't want definitive or listings of organizations that are going to be presented, because I don't want people to think that they're going to get funding, and we find out that this process, to me, as I said before, I have concerns about the transparency of the process and the autonomy.
Well, as the mayor, I assembled an advisory group, and the advisory group went through a process, a process that was supported both with objective and subjective decision-making. You can see-
I know the list of the committee members, but how many of those committee members approved or applied for ARPA funding?
How many applied for?
Yes.
Anybody that-
Associated with the organization or applied for ARPA funding.
Any of those that did recused themselves from voting on the items that had to do with any organization that they had to do, had, are board members of or employees of.
Okay, so that would avoid the conflict, but from what I've heard, there were completed applications that weren't even ranked.
That weren't even what?
That were not ranked. They received zeros. How can a completed application that received a zero, how can it even receive a zero? I'm not sure, I'm hearing this, and I heard this from a committee member.
Yes. So here's how, here is what happened. The, again, we have both objective and subjective. We chose a system of ranking that included rubrics. So rubrics are a way to rank each individual character of an application. There are some folks-
Who created the rubric?
Huh?
Who created the rubric?
Ms. Baldwin and I.
And that's it?
Yeah, somebody's got to, somebody's got to do it.
Isn't there allocated funds to use exterior parties to help with this process?
I don't understand the need.
Why?
And council hadn't requested, not that it would be your purview, but-
Why wouldn't it? Why wouldn't we be included in the process? And this is what I'm saying about the autonomy of it, is that there needs to be individuals that have experience with this, that are outside of the city. The county uses YCEA. There's other municipalities that have used third parties to help with this process. It takes the ethical part, it takes the involvement of the city when it comes to ranking these, when it comes to conflict, when it comes to Sunshine, it helps with all of that.
So I guess I'm a little confused. We brought in 11 individuals from different demographics and from different economic statuses to review these applications. I'm not understanding what you're-
You shouldn't be confused about it. I talked to most of them, and they didn't have, they told me that this was an overwhelming experience, that they didn't have as much time as they would like to to review the applications. So-
Well, they were told at the beginning that it would be about 20 hours, and it didn't take more than 20 hours to do the applications.
Okay, but I'm going off of my conversations with them. So if they can be, you can be outstanding, and I recommend, and I'm glad and I support all the individuals that were a part of the committee, but if you have experts that can deal with this, then you use those members as an advisory committee, and then you take the experts to do the rankings to make sure that there's no legal or ethic violations.
We already went through that with our solicitor. We have our own staff. I'm not sure why we don't trust our own staff and you want to hire-
The same way that we, with the Penn Market, we have a consultant. With the wastewater treatment plant, we have, are using the PEL to help us, this would be the same process.
I don't understand-
I don't know what there's not to understand about having an outside party assist us with $35 million.
Vice President Walker, if you-
I don't understand, again, I don't understand what would be the problem of having an exterior party to help us with this process. It's $35 million. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity.
Yeah. And the advisory group did an excellent, excellent job. We had seven or eight members on that last call?
I'm not taking anything away from the advisory committee.
Seven or eight members that were on the last call all agreed that the process was a good, thorough process. We all agreed.
Okay, and the advisory committee can agree, and we have two members on council. I guess Councilwoman Washington has something to say.
Yeah, I don't know, she wasn't, she didn't really participate very much.
Oh, and the reason why I didn't participate, I just want everyone to know, the last three meetings, I was not invited to those meetings. There was a fictitious email created with my name on it, with an email that is not my name, that is not, I've never, even when I worked at the City of York, I've never had that email before. It's not an email that is mine. I just looked at it. My email has always been the same, E W F O R Y O R K at gmail dot com. And that is not the email. The email that it was sent to was E T Washington at YorkCity.org. That has never-
Yeah, I'm sorry for that misunderstanding, but all you had to do was tell somebody that you didn't get an email.
I didn't know, I didn't know there was any meetings until I talked to Lou, Councilmember Rivera.
Well, you had the schedule, everybody was given the schedule of the meetings at the beginning.
I did not know, there was changes in the meetings, and we, several of us as committee members know that, there was an email initially sent out to change some of the meeting. They were supposed to meet one date, we didn't meet that date. I was not invited to the other meeting. I was not included in those, the last three meetings, I want to let my fellow committee members know that the reason why I did not attend and the reason why I was not there is because I was not invited.
You did receive a schedule.
A fictitious email, as I just stated, was created for me that I have never used. Even when I was an employee of the City of York, that was never even my email address. So I don't know where it came from or how it was created, although it has my name on it. That is not my email, has never been my email.
Okay, all right.
And on top of that, I was listed as an alternate, but I only received two emails. I didn't even know about the upcoming meetings. If I knew about them, I could have reached out to both council members to see if they were attending, and if they were not attending, then I would have attended.
You received the original schedule of the meetings?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
I received their original email. Two emails, that's all I received. I didn't even know there were other meetings.
That included the schedule of the meetings. Okay. So council can do what they wish with this information during the budget. I guess I'm going to leave it at that, because the administration has gone through a thorough and legal process. We've been guided, when we have questions, we've asked the solicitor, we've been guided by members of the staff who are familiar with grant making, and so-
So I'll just ask this question to the solicitor. What are the legal ramifications for this? Are we following federal regulations? Are we following PA Sunshine Act? Not "we" is the administration or the advisory committee following those procedures.
From what I've seen, we're in the clear legally. There isn't anything that has jumped out at me as a violation of anything in particular.
So yes, we're following, they're following everything that needs to be followed.
As far as I know.
I mean, this was an advisory group that met four or five times. It's not a department of the city. It is not a board or commission.
You're dispersing federal funds, though.
What's that?
You're looking to disperse federal funds.
I am. This is an advice group. It's a group that gives advice to the mayor. I never needed to do this. I could have just gone through everything and put it in the budget and handed it to council, but instead, I chose to get an advisory group together to make sure that we had information and opinions from a broad swath of our community, people that are respected leaders. That's why I asked people like Councilwoman Washington. I apologize, Councilwoman, for the confusion on the communication, but there was no intent, and I don't understand what happened. We'll look into that. But we have our controller, who is in charge of all of the money of the city. We have Carol Hill Evans, our state representative. These are people that have been elected to represent the people of York City, and therefore, it seemed like a good idea to bring them on as an advisory group to give me their opinions. This was an organized way to get the opinions of representatives of the City of York.
Opinions are great, but again, as I said before, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Why would we not hire or work with someone outside of the city that has professional experience to make sure that we're doing everything that we need to do?
Madam Vice President, I chose not to.
Okay, that's all you have to say, and that goes back to my initial point of the autonomy of this process. You chose not to.
Yep.
You chose the committee, you chose the arbitrary amount for $5 million without getting any type of consultant to help us with this, to make sure that it was a legal representation, equitable representation, and I have issues with that, and it doesn't ease my concerns.
Okay.
I have a few questions.
I came to do a presentation. I'm not sure what I'm in right now.
It's okay, but I have a question for you. You said that there was a survey of 590 people.
Yes.
There, aren't there, correct me if I'm wrong, 44,000 people in our-
There are 23,000 adults. Generally, when you're considering who's going to be taking a survey, you don't think that two-year-olds are going to be taking a survey.
Okay.
So you look at the adult population, and you divide the adult population, you run it through an algorithm that then tells you how accurate the survey is. I ran 590 divided by 23,000 through the algorithm. It came out with a 95%, 95% what is it, confidence rating, and a 4% margin of error on any given question.
And earlier, did you say that it was only you and, I can't remember her last name?
Ms. Baldwin.
Ms. Baldwin, that put the rubrics thing together?
Yes. You don't need a committee to do a basic rubric on whether or not they were meeting the standards, and I did not bring a copy of the rubric with me, but we don't need a committee to draw up a rubric. It's just like a way to grade, grade things. It's like asking a teacher if they had a whole committee to figure out how to grade a test.
Well, do we have to use this money now, or can it be used in 2024 or 2026? Is it's not an immediate need to spend this money this year or next year?
There are teenagers dying on our streets.
I didn't ask you that.
There are people that are hungry, and I, as the mayor, want to spend 5 million, 5.501 million of it now, and that will be in your budget, and council can determine whether that is what the city wants to spend.
That's not what I asked you, Mayor. I asked you, does this money have to be used this year, or can it be used in 2024 through 2026?
No, it has to all be allocated by 2024.
Okay.
Yes.
And it has to be spent by 2026. So to answer your question, no, it does not have to be spent this year.
It has to be allocated, yes.
But we're not going to argue about that.
I am not, with the problems that the City of York has, I am not going to sit here with this money in the bank and not use it to try and stop the violence or help the homeless. It's absurd to me to think-
We're not asking you not to do that. We're just asking to make sure that this process is fair and equitable and ethical and transparent. That's what we're asking, and when you say that you made the decisions to do stuff, I have a problem with that.
Well, I'm the mayor.
Okay, and we're city council.
Yes, and if you want to be mayor, then be the mayor. But at some point, the administration has to take action.
And at some point, you have to realize that you need to communicate with us and collaborate with us, other than you making decisions and giving recommendations of what you're going to do.
Two members of council, I disagree. The budget-making process is very clear. The administration puts together a budget, and the budget is then submitted to council for them to approve or disapprove by amendment or in its entirety. That is the process. Council's role-
And we can work together to do that, not just you making decisions.
You work on the part where you either approve it or disapprove it.
I'm working on it now. It has to come before us.
Right.
We're the legislative branch, so I want to make sure that we're following all regulations before this money is just given out to people.
Right, we are.
Where are the regulations? Are there federal regulations?
Yes, there's books of them.
And we're following all of them?
Yes.
Solicitor, we're following all of our federal regulations when it comes to this process.
We have a grants coordinator, Melanie Baldwin, who is well-versed in grants and how this money can be spent.
Ms. Baldwin, are we following all of our regulations when it comes to this funding? The process?
Please use the microphone.
In some cases, there's no guidelines that we aren't following, so we're following guidelines. The tricky part is going to be when we do expenditure categories.
Okay. Can you explain more?
Sure, please. So there are 66 expenditure categories. Our money has to be sort of allocated by January 22nd of 2022. My next Treasury report will be at that time, and I have to have everything that we're going to obligate done, and that does not mean it's going to, that can change, but I have to have everything obligated, revenue recovery, all of the money obligated. So in the way that the mayor put them in categories, I have to have everything, all of the 35 million dollars obligated. There are 66 expenditure categories, which come under what the guidelines for ARPA has been, and so there are four guidance principles for ARPA, my ARPA bubble's back there. And there's a compliance, we just got more compliance as of yesterday. And so it is a matter of, we are in compliance in doing what we have done, we just have to be careful moving forward that we are putting the right categories in, the expenditures in the right categories.
Well, Ms. Melanie, if that doesn't happen, and you don't have that done, what happens?
What do you mean, having the money obligated? Well, the money obligated, it can change every month, because I have, we have the ability, I'm sorry, we have the ability to work with Treasury to re-obligate it. So say we obligate all $35 million to buy me a Double Dutch company. And January can say that, but in February, you can reallocate it, we're doing public works. We're doing, one of the categories is we're doing negative economic impact, what we're doing then, but it can change. It changes every month, because life changes. We have to have it obligated by 2024, and all the money has to be spent by 2026.
So if it's obligated to do housing-
Yes, ma'am.
Lights and that kind of thing, and there's not enough money in that category, can it, money be taken from one category, put into another one?
So the expenditure categories are just the way that we identify projects, so there's not money attached to them. So they're just, and there's a blue and white form that I hope that you- So they're just, and there's a blue and white form that I hope that you get that has all the 66 categories, and I can go upstairs and print one out if you would like it. But we have to know what projects fit in what categories. And that's the, there's no money attached to that. It's just an expenditure. Our first report was in August, and we had only done the revenue replacement, which is done by the administration. We hadn't spent any money, even the HRC part, the part that we gave $50,000. We hadn't spent any money. So all of my answers were zero, and we couldn't, it was okay, because most companies or cities or tribal governments or whatever had not spent their money yet.
So the $50,000, and I'm just trying to get a clear understanding.
Yes, ma'am.
So the $50,000 for the HRC?
Yes, ma'am.
Has to be voted on, or it doesn't?
No, it didn't have to be voted on. It was designated, you all gave a resolution, and you passed the resolution, but it wasn't in the timeline of where they were asking for it. So it was after, after, we did that after August, and they were having me do the report up to August, so I didn't have to put it in that report.
Okay.
The next report, I will have to put it in.
Okay, and if you don't mind, I would like to have a copy of that paper with the 66 categories.
Yes, ma'am, I'll make sure you get it before you leave.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Baldwin, the process seemed, and I want to commend the mayor because I think he was trying, however, the process seemed long and arduous. It was just, to me, it was just a lot of work, but I have a question for her.
I want to address that first. I gave the committee an option.
No, he asked her.
He has the floor.
I have a question for her. So, Ms. Baldwin, is this the way you would have done this if you were in charge of making this happen?
Councilman, I have to object to that question. Council doesn't have the ability to question city employees, and that puts Ms. Baldwin in a terrible position to have to potentially disagree with her boss or agree with her boss. It's an unfair position for her to be in.
Counsel, the advisory group voted on every part of the process. We, at the beginning, at the first meeting, I had said, we can all, we can each review all of these grants, or there are enough of us, because this is how it works when you do these kinds of grants. I've been part of these things. I've done it with the National Wildlife or Fish and Wildlife Fund. I've worked on grants like this in my previous career, so I'm familiar with the process of choosing grants, and you can either have everybody in the group review every single one, or you can split them up into groups. The committee at the very first meeting said they wanted to review every single one, and if we got more, we would then revisit that. I asked them again later if they wanted to revisit it and split up the remaining grants. Everybody there said, we're going to do it, and, am I right? Yeah.
So every member of the committee reviewed 132?
No, because not all of the members of the committee, first of all, some of the members of the committee abstained on certain grants because of their involvement with different organizations, but then other members of the committee just did not complete all of their work. But we had a good, and, what's that? And then their scores were not counted. So if you look back at the chart that I provided with you, the fourth column is marked score count. That will tell you how many individuals scored each of the grants, and thank you for that information.
Mayor, is this how other communities did it, or did we-
No, most communities, just, the mayors are just allocating money.
That's not true.
That's not true.
Yes, it is, I'm on with the mayors.
And I researched multiple municipalities that have not even allocated their funds yet, because they're still getting community input, they're still having meetings.
We started our community input very early, and we got a significant survey.
Are we talking about the survey?
What's that?
We're just talking about the survey. What was the other community input?
Right, because some people didn't even know about ARPA.
Mayor, do you think the process, you think your process was right? You think, or do you think it was long?
I think it is, I think it was a great process. I think some people overestimated their ability to commit to the process when they committed to it, and people had lives. We had one individual who ended up being in the middle of a real estate transaction that was unexpected, and she was not able to fulfill as much as she wanted to. We had some other people that found themselves too busy to complete every task, but you will see that-
What's every task? Because I thought everyone-
The reviewing of 132 applications.
But you said that everyone completed except if they had a conflict. That's what you just said.
No, I didn't even get through the thought process yet. Everyone that, I just said, some people found that they didn't have time to do it.
But a couple minutes ago, I asked you, did all of the committee members complete reviewing the applications? You said yes unless they had a conflict.
That is not what I said, Madam Vice President.
Did I miss something?
That's what I heard.
I think that's what I heard.
That's what we heard.
Wow. What I was saying was that one of the members found themselves in a real estate transaction and did not have time to complete it. Other members ran out of time, did not have the time to complete them. They talked with the group, and-
You're looking over here, so was it, you said other members did-
Others, I will not speak for the members and call out who did what. I'm telling you, the facts of the advisory group is that-
So every committee member did not complete the review of applications?
Correct. But we have plenty of data for each one. Everybody agreed, everybody that continued to follow through, which, except for Councilwoman Washington, I have not heard any problems with communications, so again, I apologize for that. I wish I would have known, but there was no problem with communications. Everybody was communicating. Councilman Rivera communicated and let us know what his resources were, what his ability was. You know, other people communicated and let us know, hey, something came up in my life, or guess what, I got to do something over here, and we had a, we had a schedule, and we had a deadline, and we had sufficient input on every item. There is no item that did not get at least five reviews. Most of them, I think the average was eight reviews, which, eight people reviewing applications and filling out the rubrics, that is a solid process. I mean, I've been involved in processes that have four or five people reviewing the applications and then making the recommendations.
I hear what you're saying. I'll just have to disagree with that, and what you just said, to me, supports my reasoning for having an external party help with this process.
Okay.
I don't know that we're really going anywhere with this presentation. I suggest that when you do the budget presentation, all of this will come out, and the amounts will be allocated to given parties.
They are already done.
And then the council will study those.
Very good, thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you. Speaking of the budget, there will be hearings on November 22 and 23 at 6 o'clock here in council chambers. Some of council members will be tuning in via Zoom. We will have a special meeting on November 30 at 10:00 a.m., which, at which time the budget will be actually introduced for consideration by council. Now, we will enter into the legislative session and subdivision and land development and HARB. Item number one is a resolution approving a subdivision plan.
So introduced.
Resolution number 116, introduced by Judy Ritter-Dixon, where a site design concepts on behalf of RSDC submitted subdivision plan for the properties of 139 through 141 South Duke, 121 East Princess, and 138 through 148 South Howard Street, and where the city's officers have reviewed and recommended approval of the plan with certain conditions, and whereas, excuse me, the subdivision and plan is in accordance with the city's ordinances, now therefore be resolved. Council hereby approve said plan.
Move to approve.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion from council members? Is there anyone here in the room that represents this group? Yes, sir.
I'm here, receiving. My name is Tom Aywood, the site design concept. This is a rather straightforward subdivision. There are nine lots involved initially. Eight of those are being combined into one lot, and there's one lot left over, a small lot as a residual tract on Princess Street. You'll be finding out what's going to happen with this lot on the very next plan that you do here. I'll answer any other questions that you have related to this subdivision.
Anything, counsel?
None.
Nope, very good, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything from the public on this matter? Please call the roll.
Washington, I'm sorry, Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter-Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes, that's so ordered. Next, we have resolution number 117.
So introduced.
Resolution number 117, introduced by Judy Ritter-Dixon, where a site design concepts on behalf of RSDC submitted a land development plan for the properties of 139 through 141 South Duke Street, 121 East Princess Street, and 138 through 148 South Howard Street, and where the city's officers have recommended approval of the plan, and where the plan is in accordance with the city's ordinances, now therefore be resolved, said plan is hereby approved.
Move to approve.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion by counsel? Sir, would you like to fully explain everything?
Certainly, certainly. I apologize if I'm not having easel tonight, but I will hold it up to my man away present.
Could one of you turn your mic over so that, Mr. Anglerith? Okay, very good.
So this is the lot that we just subdivided, turned it into one of basically six tenths of an acre lot parcel. Duke Street's here, Howard is in the rear, and this lot originally was a parking lot. It's going to remain a parking lot in the front. We're going to have 46 parking spaces and a multi-story mixed-use development in the rear facing Duke Street, but also having a face onto Howard.
And which block is this?
So this is the 100 block. Princess Street is right here, former Garrary Motors, Didi and Smiling Johns is right down here, and this is Newton Street. Over here would be Collusion Tap House.
Right.
Did you say storage?
No, multi-story.
Multi-storage?
Yes. So there'll be, so we'll have-
Storage, oh, okay.
Storage, yes.
Okay.
So there'll be a commercial on the first floor and residences on the next three, approximately 24 units.
Great, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any further discussion by counsel? Anything from the public? Please call the roll.
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter-Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes, and that is so ordered. Next, we have resolution 118.
So introduced.
Resolution number 118, introduced by Judy Ritter-Dixon, where a Peal &amp; Company submitted a land development plan for the properties at 480 through 486 West Princess Street, and where the city's officers have recommended conditional approval of the plan, and where the plan is in accordance with the city's ordinances, now therefore be resolved, council hereby approve said plan.
Move to approve.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion by counsel? Anything from the public on this? Anyone representing this group, Peal &amp; Company? No. And nothing from the public on this? Please call the roll.
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter-Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes, and that is so ordered. Next is resolution 119, accepting the recommendations of HARB. So introduced.
Resolution number 119, introduced by Lou Rivera. Be it resolved that council hereby approves a certificate of appropriateness to be certified and forwarded to the following in the applications filed by Carlos Fuentes for work at 230 Gas Avenue, Ingris Morel for work at 175 South Pine, Logos Academy for work at 255 West King Street, and Goldfein and Joseph P.C. for the work to be done at 138 East Market Street.
Mr. Rivera?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion by counsel? Anything from the public? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter-Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes, and that's so ordered. Next, we have final passage of bill number 56.
Move to approve.
Second.
And that was bill number 56, an ordinance that was introduced by Sandy Walker at the October 19 meeting, making appropriation for money not otherwise appropriated for various utilities. Their motion to approve?
Okay.
Okay. I'm sorry, was there a second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or concerns from counsel? I do have a question that perhaps Ms. Robertson can help me out with. This is an awful lot of money. Can you tell me where it's coming from and where it's really going to?
It is coming from, first of all, the reasoning behind it was-
Do you have your mic on?
Hello, yes. The reasoning behind it is every year we do the budget, and we do the best we can in terms of looking historically at utility usage and also anticipating any increase that has come to our knowledge that may be coming based on the specific type of utility. So the best that we attempt to do that, there are times that issues like this come up where we were not anticipating the increase in the expense of utilities for this year and/or our use of the utilities. So this is where we've gotten to at this point. So that's the reasoning for the additional expense added to the budget is to cover our actual utility, the actual utility bills that we are getting through the city, which is unbelievable when you actually start thinking about, you know, the individual utility bills that you get for yourself, and then realizing that we have those for every building we have, plus we get into complicated situations in terms of paying for streetlights and, you know, other little sub-areas where there's electric needed or natural gas of some sort. So this is specific to buildings or facilities that fall under the care of those specific funds, which is why they're broken out with general and the Recreation Fund and the SIR to cover those areas, and the actual revenue for it is from fund balance from the previous year. So essentially, we had budgeted for more expense in the prior year than we actually spent, and/or we received more revenue than we anticipated, so then we end up with the fund balance, and so it gets kind of complicated in the world of budget versus having, you know, cash in the bank account, but for budget purposes, we need more budget added in those expense lines so that we can actually pay the bills that have come through this year.
Okay, thank you.
Was there something with fuel? I think in our meeting with Mr. Hevner, he said something about fuel or gas prices?
Yeah, and natural gas was definitely something that we anticipated, and something else that comes through is, you know, sometimes not just the actual cost of the resource that is being produced, but all the other costs associated with getting the resource to you, to us, and I'm sure the cost of fuel associated with trucks and everything else involved with the actual process, it has something to do with it. That would be my anticipation, what he said.
All right, anything else? Anything from the public on this matter? Please call the roll.
Rivera? Washington?
Yes.
Ritter-Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes, and that's so ordered. Next is final passage of bill number 56. Next is final passage of Bill Number 57.
Move to approve.
And that's Bill Number 57, which was introduced by the Queen of Washington at the October 19th meeting, amending the budget in the amount of $60,000 to be used to outfit six vehicles with necessary emergency response equipment for the Department of Fire Rescue.
Second.
Any questions, thoughts from council? Anything from the public on this matter? Please call the roll.
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Nixon.
Yes, and that is so ordered. Now, under new business, we have introduction of Bill Number 59.
We have Bill Number 58.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we do. Final passage of Bill Number 58.
Move to approve.
And that's Bill Number 58, which was introduced by Queen of Washington at the October 19th meeting, amending the budget, the 2021 budget, by appropriating revenue and expenditures for the Police Department according to the approved modification for the enhancement of law enforcement operations.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Anything to add, Ms. Washington?
No.
Anything from the council?
No.
And anything from the public on this matter? Please call the roll.
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Nixon. Yes, and that is so ordered. Now, we have introduction of Bill Number 59.
So introduced, I'm sorry.
Did she say so introduced?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yeah, I did.
It's been introduced.
And that is Bill Number 20, I'm sorry, Bill Number 59. I'm making various amendments to the 2021 budget. Okay, I'll read the whole thing. Amending the York City budget for 2021 by appropriating revenue and expenditures for the Parking Bureau in the amount of $270,000 to be used for capital expenditures, appropriating revenue in the amount of $15,000 in expenditures in the amount of $32,500 for the Department of Economic and Community Development to be used for expenditures received from Kiva for an annual hub fees and marketing and promotion of Kiva York Hub, appropriating revenue in the amount of $80,350.50 and expenditures in the amount of $160,701 for the Police Department crossing guards and appropriating revenue and expenditures for the Police Department in the amount of $34,839.97 for the enhancement of law enforcement operations.
Very good, and since this is an introduction of the bill, it will sit until the next meeting where we will consider it at that time. In the meantime, if there are any questions by council on any of these items, we should be in touch with the appropriate department for answers. Next is Resolution, that would be Resolution Number 120, I believe.
Is there a motion to introduce by short title?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Resolution Number 120, introduced by Queen of Washington. A resolution declaring November 15th through the 19th, 2021, is Pennsylvania's Education for Children and Youth Experiencing Homelessness Awareness Week and Friday, November 19th, 2021, as Red Shirt Day in the City of York.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from council on this?
I do have a comment.
Please.
I just wanted to encourage our community, although today is Red Shirt Day, to raise awareness for our homeless youth in our community. I want to encourage us to raise our awareness every day to keep our eyes open for our youth that we may see that may appear to be homeless. There are several organizations in our community that provide services to our homeless youth in the community, and I encourage you to become involved with those organizations, whether that is through philanthropic efforts, whether that's through volunteerism, or whether that's through just referring on youth or families that you know that have youth that are experiencing homelessness, that need assistance. And our schools are a great resource to refer youth to those organizations and those services. It's something for us to keep our eyes open and to keep our awareness up in our community about the number of youth that are homeless in our community. So, it's just not about today, and I know we're recognizing the weekend today, but it's about recognizing it all year long. Thank you.
Tragic situation there. Anything from the public on this item? Please call the roll.
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Nixon.
Yes, and that is so ordered. Next is Resolution 121.
So introduced.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry, I didn't, my numbers were off here, I was just correcting that. As Resolution Number 121, introduced by Queen of Washington, be it resolved that council hereby appoints Lisa H. Welty as an alternate member of the York City Civil Service Board to serve in site capacity until the first Monday of January 2025.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Nixon.
No. Next is Resolution 122.
So introduced.
Resolution Number 122, introduced by Sandy Walker. Whereas the city entered into a reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the George Street Pet and Bike Safety Improvement Project, and whereas the railroad company has agreed to furnish and maintain a flagger that may be deemed necessary to protect and safeguard its railroad during the construction, and whereas the city contract will reimburse the railroad, and whereas the Commonwealth has, I'm sorry, whereas the Commonwealth, Department of Transportation requires the city to enter into a no-cost reimbursement agreement with the railroad, now therefore be it resolved that council hereby authorizes Director of Public Works to execute said agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Anything, Ms. Walker?
Mr. Green is here. Did you want to add anything?
My agreements we already done, they just come back, not done, but it's different projects.
Do you want to go to the mic, please?
I'm sorry, I said a lot of these agreements that you're seeing coming through right now are ones that we've done for, like, north, I mean, for all of George Street paving project, rail trail projects. So, each project, we have to do the same things and bring these agreements to you guys.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Nixon.
Yes. Next, we have Resolution 123.
So introduced.
Resolution Number 123, introduced by Sandy Walker. Whereas the city desires to enter into a reimbursement grant agreement with PennDOT for the acceptance of federal highway funds, and whereas the city has been awarded $2,039,000 in grant funds under the PennDOT's Transportation Improvement Program to cover the cost of the George Street Pet and Bike Safety Improvement Project. Now therefore be it resolved that the city does hereby approve acceptance of said grant and authorizes the Director of Public Works to accept the agreement on behalf of the City of York.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment on that?
I'll just ask Mr. Green just to talk about the actual project.
So, this is part of our George Street project, we're going to be paving from end to end of the city. And it'll be going from York Hospital down to Parkway Boulevard with the city. But also, it's going to be some safety, some pedestrian safety improvements that will be done for the project. And then also, with the rail trail, it's going to, we're going to be breaking down the rail trail December 13th, which also will help out going across the North George Street Bridge, going towards Hamilton Avenue. So, just some safety procedures and stuff that we'll be doing with our contractors.
Good to hear, thank you.
Anything further? Anything from the public? Please call the roll.
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes, yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Nixon.
Yes. Next is Resolution 124.
So introduced.
All right, Resolution 124, introduced by Sandy Walker. Whereas the city has entered into a cooperative multimodal funding agreement with Rapid Transit for the King Street Bus Station renovations, bus preemption signal and other improvements, and whereas York Railroad Company has agreed to review the PUC application plans upon execution of the Railroad Engineering Reimbursement Agreement, and whereas York City will reimburse the railroad through the multimodal funding agreement, now therefore be it resolved that the Director of Public Works is hereby authorized to execute said agreements.
Move to approve.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments on this?
You must have just.
So, with this project, obviously, you see the King Street Bus Station, which is being renovated currently. But in this project, there's, where was it, I'm sorry, the bus preemption signal. So, what happens, it's going to help with the flow of traffic. So, now when buses are going out, they're able, the light will change as buses are coming out based off the timing system, and buses will now be able to head straight down King Street to move out and then make the turns of a person where they need to. But then also help with the flow of traffic with the schools and stuff like that, we're making charter. Also with the Logos Academy that we have, you know, on King Street as well. So, it's just going to help with the flow of traffic. So, there's something that's going to help us out here in the city, but we have money from the state to reimburse them for the project with them including theirs.
Thank you.
So, that's what a bus preemption signal is?
Yes.
Thank you. Anything from the public on this item? Yes, please. Please speak into the mic.
So, my question was for the gentleman here. He said they're going to replace the sidewalks from one end of George to the next through the city?
No, streets, we're repaving, George Street.
Oh, George Street?
Yes.
Oh, all right, that's what I'm saying.
We're talking about the bus station here.
Oh, all right, I was, I'm sorry, I was going back to the.
We've already discussed that and voted on it. Thank you. Next, Resolution, which would be 124.
126.
Wait.
Am I right?
We have to.
We didn't vote.
We didn't vote on this, I apologize, I'm one step ahead. Please call the roll.
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Nixon.
Yes. Now, we have Resolution 124.
25.
23.
125.
125.
So introduced.
I'm marking them off incorrectly.
Is there a motion to introduce by short title?
So moved.
Second. Second.
Okay. All in favor say yes.
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 Approved, no? Resolution 125, introduced by Sandy Walker. A resolution authorizing a budget transfer for the 2021 budget for the Highway Bureau in the amount of $59,000, wastewater treatment plant in the amount of $71,683, and the Highway Bureau in the amount of $20,000.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on this?
For the budget transfers, I see it, but did you want to talk a bit about it?
Yeah, so for the wastewater treatment plant, obviously, some issues that we have the digesters. We ran low on our account for polymer, so we need to purchase more polymer out of the plant to get us through to the end of the year, so that's why we made that transfer. Highway Department, we have some invoices that'll be coming in bills to get us through for the end of the year down to Highway Department. So, we have some funds that we weren't, you know, wasn't going to use for the end of the year, so we just moved the funds so we can actually spend the funds this year.
Thank you.
Anything from the public on this item? Please call the roll.
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Nixon.
Yes. Next, we have Resolution 126.
So introduced.
Is there a motion to revise short title?
I'll make a motion to revise short title.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Resolution Number 126, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon. A resolution approving substantial amendment to the 2019 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments by council?
No, I thought Norma was here, but she's gone, no.
All right. Anything from the public on this item? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Nixon.
Yes. Next, we have Resolution 127.
So introduced.
Is there a motion to revise short title?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Resolution 127, introduced by Judy A. Ritter Dixon. A resolution approving the 2022 Annual Action Plan.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Crosby, do you have anything that you can add to this, please?
Not really. This is just our annual action plan for submission to HUD, which basically explains how we're going to spend our 2022 allocations for the Community Development Block Grant and our home investment partnership funds for the year 2022. This is a preliminary submission. We won't know what our actual funding amount is until sometime early in 2022.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything from the public? Please call the roll.
Washington, I'm sorry, Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Nixon.
Yes. Next, we have Resolution Number 128.
So introduced.
Resolution Number 128, introduced by Sandy Walker. Whereas the city maintains self-funded health insurance program to provide health insurance benefits to employees, and whereas their city purchases stop-loss insurance for the purpose of limiting the city's risk exposure to excess liability, and whereas the city's insurance broker requested quotes for stop-loss insurance for the year 2022, and whereas Peretto Underwriting Partners proposed the best combination of services, price, and products, now therefore be it resolved, council hereby authorizing an agreement with Peretto Underwriting for same.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Anything further? Anything from the public? Please call the roll.
And that is Rivera.
Yes.
Walker. Rivera, Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Nixon.
Yes. Should we introduce ourselves to you? All right. Last, we have Resolution 129.